Good morning. It's June 3rd. It's 10 o'clock. And we'll have call to order for the Montague County Commission meeting. Eldon Callen.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
Tom Bloom. Here. We'll ask a moment of, if you rise and have a moment of silent meditation and then pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, okay. Consent and approval?
Honorations, we have eight listings, $7,653.63 for tax shares 2013 and 14. Fiduciary orders for June 3rd, minutes of May 20. Vouchers, General County Fund, $286,527.81. General County Purchasing Card, $44,092.57. Coles servants fund, $5,704.18. Camp Muffley, $80.52. Camp Muffley Purchasing Card, $670.78. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,023.95. Chestnut Ridge Park Purchasing Card, $944.59. Mason Dixon Park, $612.48. Mason Dixon Purchasing Card, $396.89. Sisters Valuation Purchasing Card, $276.65. Magistrate Court Purchasing Card, $48. General School Fund, $11,705. Home Confinement Fund, $8,471. 911 Purchasing Card, $211.89. 911 Cash, $937.19. Total of $363,680.50. And there are no better revisions today.
Have a move?
Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Okay, at this time, we have comments from the public. Anybody who wishes to stand up and speak, they may please state your name, your address, and feel free to speak. The public. Nope. Uh-oh. Oh, no. Seeing that there's no one in the public, thank you very much. We are now Renetta on Grants.
Good morning.
Good morning. How you doing?
Good. We just have one reimbursement request today for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, total of $19,933.91. Scratch that, I'm sorry. $21,476.12. And that is for the Curtis House, Connecting Link, RDVIC, and the Bartlett House. And this is for the month of May.
Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes.
We'd like to present to the commission, really affirm for the record, the Waste Coal Grant from the West Virginia Development Office was submitted on Friday to meet the deadline. The total applied for was $296,000. 296,000. 90 percent of that total is used for infrastructure and $29,646.36 will be used for economic development. The two projects we've applied for, the first is to renovate the Courthouse Plaza for the infrastructure portion and the $29,646.36 for economic development. We've applied for the reopening of the Upper Monongahela River Locks that we've collected money from different entities for. So we'll be applying for those and hopefully we'll get those approved.
Move to approve and confirm.
Second.
Been properly moved and second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I think it's very positive that we move forward. Whenever we can get grant money to pay for things, I'm all for it. Less money out of our people's pockets, that's a fact. I realize that eventually it comes out of someone's pocket. We like to share and share alike here in Montague County, so I'm looking forward to that. And I'm really excited about the locks moving forward and the confirmation of that. When Umbra and Marion County Commission and this commission went together to start that whole project and you all voted for me to work on it, everyone told us that it was an impossibility. It would never happen. You'll never get an agreement with the Corps of Engineers. It has to go to Congress. It has to. Well, it's done. So people in Montague County, and I'm glad to see Senator Beach here as well as the mayor, we don't like to take no for an answer. We appreciate that.
I just think it's going to be an exciting project, both of them, actually, to benefit the county.
And I want to say that when we learned of this last week, when Ed and I were here, I want to definitely say a congratulations and a thank you to Renetta.
Yes.
Bobby and Diane, who put this together, came up with some suggestions, ideas. I think the Upper Mon situation for economic development and possibly opening up more days is an exceptional project. And the other thing that I would like to say is to the public, and I think the three of us are very excited about, we had said due to the trees that are dying and due to safety reasons and because of what was going on in Cordova Square that we were going to have to deal with it. What I'm very excited about is this money now is from a grant, so it will not come from the individual taxpayer dollars if we get this. And I really think this is another thing that when we talk about partnerships and grants and the three county commissioners are working to try and use our budget correctly and to move forward and find funds where they are. So with that, the question has been called. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. As we're on a positive mood, some of you, as just mentioned by Eldon, we have a surprise guest and a very positive announcement. And I wanted Senator Bob Beach is here to give that announcement. And they do not know about it, so I want you to give the positive, you know, another thing for our community that you're doing for us, Bob.
Well, thank you for that buildup. I appreciate that. Commissioner, good morning to all of you. I'm happy to be here this morning with you to present this grant to the PACE organization here in the community. The governor, along with Senator President Osgo and myself, are happy to forward this grant to you as to assist PACE with the purchase of equipment related to job development here in our community. So if our representative from PACE, Mr. Bob Hunter, come forward. This grant is for the amount of $10,000. And I think you made that application about a year ago, and unfortunately, it's just the way the wheels move in circles. But we're happy to submit this to you and see the job growth there. Well, you know, and one of the things that I'm always happy to report is that we're continuing to grow out of PACE. West Virginia leads the nation in disabled adults with disabilities. And we also lead the nation unemployed disabled adults with disabilities. And Montague County can be very proud of the leadership role that we take. And we need this kind of support to continue to grow. We've got new things. I was just in a staff meeting yesterday where we were talking about a couple new lines of business to get into that's going to put even more people to work and create some more options. So Senator, thank you. Commissioners, thank you for all of your support.
We'll get you with us. Stand next to us.
Yeah, we'll get all five of us up.
Do you have a camera?
I do. Yeah, that's always good.
You all come up here and stand together.
Behind you or you going to do it in front?
We usually stand back.
Okay.
That way. I've been working out.
How's it going, all?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, thanks very much.
Thank you. And I do want to say two things while Bob's here and also, I want to give a lot of credit. Bob has been working with us through the whole TIF project, getting things moving when things slowed down. I think people sometimes don't give him the credit that's due. And I want you to know, this year has been a tremendous year, Bob, that we've worked with you and you've helped us greatly. And hopefully, we can continue the whole Montague County. And I also want to say that PACE runs the Beehive Cafe, right? Well, and talking about partnerships, I bought two tickets, my wife and I going up to the WVU game to see Jed Jerko, and I noticed that the meals are going to be provided by Beehive Cafe. So it's a kind of partnership with WVU, the community, you know, and the states sees what's going on. And I'll tell you, we just look forward to more of those things and we really appreciate it. Thank you. I only signed the top page. Okay, I didn't. Okay, well, I don't see Tom here yet, so we can move on. Is Catherine?
Catherine.
Not here, so it's still early. Okay. Can we get, let's go to correspondence and we'll come back. Letter from Board of Education regarding the new, instead of the PRO officers are now called the SRO officers.
This is basically just a letter from Frank D'Avano Superintendent thanking the commission and the sheriff's office for working. And they're also working with the city of Morgantown in Westover with this, it used to be called Cotsin School Program.
Right.
But I think it's a great benefit to all the schools in the county.
Basically, it's requesting one-third of the cost. It'd be the city, the school system, Morgantown, and then the county commission. And this would allow two officers in the four middle schools.
We had talked to the sheriff about this earlier.
Yes, and the sheriff was in agreement.
Agreement.
Do I have a motion or a discussion on this?
I thought we had a motion before. Did we have another motion?
They'd approve it before.
Oh, it was approved before. Oh, okay, then it's just a thank.
We approved it and everything.
Okay, then this is just part of the record.
Dave was a part of that, leaving the conversation.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I make sure that my chief understands and that he conveyed that to Frank and there's another guy, I can't remember the guy's name, that's working with them.
Alan Henke?
Adam Henkens.
Adam.
Adam Henkens.
Henkens, yes.
Anyhow, you know, everything that we want to do is contingent upon us having the manpower. And it looks like we're going to have the manpower. But now they say that this is going to be split three ways as far as the pay goes. Is that correct?
That was the plan, yeah.
Yes.
We would pay a third and the municipality would pay a third.
You pay half.
And the school board would pay a third.
Yes.
Okay, well, my question there is, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Sandy or anybody else, but my question there is, that third, is that going to include their contribution to the pension? How's that going to work?
The city's going to pay for all that.
For the sheriff's department, we bill for their wages and their benefits, all of their benefits.
So it's all, so that's going to be split three ways, just the way, that's my only question. And hopefully, we're going to be able, it looks like we're going to be able to. That was the only question.
Sure. And we could get that clarified too, if you want, just to make sure. Okay. Let's do the other correspondence and we'll go back. The application for payment for Masara Corporation.
This is for pay application 14, an amount of $1,426,408.00 for the Justice Center.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Welcome. And we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
You might stop downstairs and get another paper signed. Then do it. Bobby needs to talk to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fantastic. Okay. Now, if we can go to Tom Ammon. Tom, how you doing? We're going to have one to consider adoption by the commission and order which would approve University Town Center Project Number Two for the existing property tax increment financing district known as the County Commission of Montague County Development District Number Four Emulated Matters. Do we have a motion to consider for adoption?
Yeah.
And then we'll have and discuss it if you.
Yeah, I want to move to approve the order. I want to make it clear that this is part of an overall package. We've been very diligent in analyzing this TIF. And I know Tom and I have worked very closely as well as developers, as well as the banks, whether it was trustees, as well as the development office and the governor's office and the tax department. It's an ongoing project. It's not to just pass this order and it's done. We've got a lot of work to get here and it's going to take a lot of work to go beyond. I'm moved for approval of this order because it's part of an integrated plan for the Phase Two project. The Phase Two project also requires the STIF. And we're still waiting approval on that from the governor. We have got approval on the property tax. But without the STIF being approved, all our plans and all our work can be, basically go out the window for the West Side. So Keith Burdette of the Development Office, he's given his okay at setting in Secretary Kiss's office. He's been given all the information and all the, so I don't think he has any further questions. We've been available to give him any answers that he would want. So I think probably, I'm hopeful, and I always hesitate to say that when you rely on government to do something, I'm hopeful that within the next week to 10 days, since all the information has been in there for a couple weeks now, that we'll get the STIF approved. And then we'll have that final approval for our excise and then we'll be able to move forward on Phase Two. At that point, then I'll come back with the overall economic development projections and analysis with Tom, with Brian Helma, with Jason Donahue, and Joe Ness. All the parties will be here to answer questions at that time. But until we get that second part, that STIF approved, everything's on hold. And I just want to give that report.
I'm just checking to make sure you're done. Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's properly been moved and correctly second.
You guys are making my job pretty easy.
Yeah, so it really, there really isn't anything on this part.
Right. That's very controversial.
Yeah, let's do the first, yeah. So it's been properly moved and second with no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The first part passes. Now, the second part is to consider for adoption by the commission a reimbursement resolution which would permit the reimbursement of expenditures incurred by the commission, Westview LLC or its successors, assigns or designees relating to University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District and/or the County Commission of Montague County Development District Number Four from the proceeds of taxes and bonds or other obligations to be issued by the commission in an amount not to exceed $50 million. And do I have a motion for that and then a second?
I move to approve that.
Second.
Tom can explain the purposes.
If you want to explain that part about the $50 million and talking about the reimbursement so people understand what that means.
So we did the same thing on the Phase One project. And of course, in this case, we have both the property tax increment financing bonds and the sales tax increment financing bonds. So this is a combined resolution. It doesn't commit the county commission to issue any bonds in the future. It merely says that under the basis for purposes of the federal tax rules, that if the commission does end up issuing bonds down the road for the Phase Two project, it gives the commission the flexibility to use a portion of those bond proceeds to reimburse any expenditures for the Phase Two project that might be incurred between now and the time that the bonds are issued. You can only look back a certain period of time before the bonds are issued for reimbursement. So this gives you flexibility to basically extend that. The $50 million of bonds is the total additional bonding capacity that we're seeking for the Phase Two as between the property tax and the sales tax. We're not sure whether we're going to reach an approval at that level or not, but that's what we're seeking. The letter from the development office on the property tax side provides additional bonding capacity not to exceed $30 million for the property tax increment financing bonds. I don't know what the state is going to approve for the sales tax bonds. And as far as the parties that could be reimbursed, it would be the county. I don't expect that you guys will really have any expenditures that would be paid out of the bond closing. Or the developer. Montague is the master developer for the whole picture. Westview is the entity that they've designated for the West Side Phase Two project. It would permit reimbursement to them or if they would have a subsidiary or something, if they were to get involved, it would permit that as well. So, and as far as the scope, it's any of the project improvements that are provided for in the new project plan.
And of course, just to make sure that's, I know the commission's aware, but just to make sure the public's aware, TIF money can only be used for infrastructure. It does not build the companies.
Right.
And it does not come out of current taxpayer dollars. People that are saying, well, my taxes are building that, that's not true. The bonds are building that and future taxes will come. I was over at Tucker County with the West Virginia Association of Counties, and they're working on a TIF in Tucker County and they wanted to talk to me about it. And they run into the same thing we do. There's the idea that somehow that everyone's taxes are taken for these. All the risk is borne by the bondholders. And if, for some reason, it doesn't pan out as the bondholders and the developer rejected, we're not on the hook. We don't pay it. The banks lose it. It never comes out of taxpayer dollars and no current taxpayer dollar goes into TIF. That's why I like TIFs. It's the people that own the land, they're invested in that, and they're the ones going to have to pay back for the infrastructure. So that's a thumbnail description, a very thumbnail description of how TIFs work. But that's why, that's why it's not tax forgiveness, it's just tax dedication. And it's tax dedication of future taxes. No current taxpayer will ever, that is not inside the TIF, does not take advantage, will ever pay those taxes.
Do you have any?
I think it's very exciting in reviewing the plans, Montague County, it looks like it might be in for another roundabout unless the plans change.
Exciting possibilities for the future, for sure. Hopefully, in the near future.
Exactly. With no more discussion, I call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Since you, Tom, and since you brought up, and also Eldon, you brought it up, looking back at my documents, we passed the initial STIF request to the economic development on April 8th. Since they have to work within 60 days to make a decision, would it be beneficial for us to send a letter, again, just confirming our support and asking them, we're looking for them for a positive? Because that's actually 60 days.
When we, if they fail to respond by the 8th, if that's 60 days, would we have to re-semit and start over again?
No.
What happens?
That's their burden to meet that timeframe. And basically, only if they are requesting additional information from the county or the developer regarding the project do they have the ability to extend that.
Okay.
So if they feel like they're not ready, probably what you'll see is an information request to give them some more time.
Would it be beneficial to just send a note saying that, you know, we're looking for, you know, just a positive?
Certainly does not hurt.
I would like.
I would move that we send such a letter of support to both the governor, Secretary Kiss and Secretary Burdette.
Okay. It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Tom. And since you brought up, and also Eldon, you brought it up, looking back at my documents, we passed the initial STIF request to the economic development on April 8th. Since they have to work within 60 days to make a decision, would it be beneficial for us to send a letter, again, just confirming our support and asking them, we're looking for them for a positive? Because that's actually 60 days.
When we, if they fail to respond by the 8th, if that's 60 days, would we have to re-semit and start over again?
No.
What happens?
That's their burden to meet that timeframe. And basically, only if they are requesting additional information from the county or the developer regarding the project do they have the ability to extend that.
Okay.
So if they feel like they're not ready, probably what you'll see is an information request to give them some more time.
Would it be beneficial to just send a note saying that, you know, we're looking for, you know, just a positive?
Certainly does not hurt.
I would like.
I would move that we send such a letter of support to both the governor, Secretary Kiss and Secretary Burdette.
Okay. It's been properly moved and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good, I appreciate that. I think it just keeps it in the loop so that they know that we're watching.
That's a good idea. I make my phone calls, but those are recorded necessarily.
For the record.
It's always on the record, for sure.
Yes. Well, thank you very much, Jim, for, and hopefully, we will be discussing more positive news in the very near future when we hear from the situation. I just don't see any other development in the state that matches what we are doing. And I believe the citizens will see the benefits from this in Montague County and not also the outlying counties too around us because I believe that development's going to cause growth for the other counties too. So we appreciate everything you're doing, Tom.
Absolutely. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Tom. Tom, just one other thing I just remembered. The bond issues on this, we're going to need to do some further analysis on that. Did Jason talk to you on that?
Joe has.
For the bond issue?
Yeah. Joe has prepared a couple of models and sent those over to me. And we're going to be having a call, I think, tomorrow morning to go over some of that.
Okay, good.
Yeah. I think there's some different options there.
Right, we've got some issuers.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that was moving forward.
Yes, yes, absolutely. All right.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
They need me calling, you know.
Any other correspondence?
Here's my point of contact as far as you all on this project. Just, is there one or just?
You've authorized me.
Yeah, we've been allowed to have an Eldon, you know.
Absolutely.
Take a look and then Eldon gets it to the two of us. So as long as we're in the loop, I mean, that's fine with me.
It's always easier for me to know who to call if I, you know, need to discuss it.
No, and since he's been involved with it from day one, I'd rather, I feel more comfortable. His knowledge is a lot more than mine in this situation. And it being new, I think that let's go with that direction.
Do you agree with that then? Oh, yes.
There's even a provision under the property tip, not the sales tip, where the commission has the ability to designate someone.
Oh, really?
Who is the point of contact for the project, even after you close on the bonds. So we can always look at that, but it's not necessary.
Yeah, well, that's something we could look at. No, I think that's a good idea.
I always keep it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Back to Tom. Any other correspondence? Before Diane?
No.
Oh, okay. Unfinished business. Recycling equipment. Is Mr. Doyle around?
He's talking.
Okay, yeah. How about we'll hold off on that, go to the second right now. Appointments to Developmental Authority. We have a list that we held off and we, since you were here, we wanted to wait till you were here so we could do, I think there's four or five of them.
Okay. This is a list, and this also includes planning permission and some other boards that are coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. The names we have.
We've, yeah, we've got to separate out the city appointments. Like Dave, we just confirmed the city's appointment.
Okay.
To the Development Authority.
Right.
To our own appointments, which we appoint.
Okay.
So Dave, is there anyone, Alan Sharp?
Would be Star City.
He would be Star City.
Right. Dave is Westover.
Any of the rest of these here?
No, just Alan and Dave.
Okay. I would start by making a motion to confirm the city's appointments of, Star City's appointment of Alan Sharp, the city of Westover's appointment of Dave Johnson to the Development Authority.
Second.[1729.13]
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. They're appointed?
If Dave would rather appoint someone else, he can do that.
Right.
But for the record.
Record, we have Dave. Okay.
He's allowed to send a proxy. That's the.
You can send a proxy if you can't be there. You can send a proxy if you can't be there. Anyone that you'd like to designate?
Oh, a proxy.
Yeah, a proxy.
A pixie proxy. You can send a pixie proxy.
Dirty money.
Tom, you need to take care of that.
Oh, yeah.
Backroom.
No, yeah, no deals going on while we're on public.
Oh, Lord.
This is the city of Morgantown.
Congratulations, you were appointed.
I would like to, and there's still openings beyond that, but I would like to move to appoint Pat Martin, Kelly Palmer, David McCormick, and Frank Vitale.
Second to motion.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Those are now appointed.
We still have two or three openings.
We've mentioned Sally. I didn't know if she was.
Sally, as the new chief public defender up there, is just swamped.
So, she's, okay.
And they've also moved the, moved the meeting to lunch and she just can't come down anymore. So, she told me she wanted, she didn't think she would, but she wanted to think about it. So, I don't want to reappoint her right now.
Okay.
I give my condolences to Kelly because Sally was the first and only female, then you joined her, now you're going to be the only female. So, there's more openings, so maybe you can recruit a couple females. Thanks.
We do have one gentleman that's interested, but he has not been interviewed yet.
Okay. Okay. Now, looking at this, the planning commission, do we need to, oh, wait, that expires March 31st. Do these need to be re?
Yes, those are for reappointment.
Okay.
And they're willing to continue. Vince Pukowski, his term expired in '14, but he was never reappointed, but he's willing to continue.
Oh, okay. Did you, since you're in.
Yes. I would move that we accept Michael Mills, Alan Judy, Vince Potowski, Peter Gegenbach, and Alan Colbank for the planning commission.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And they are at a maximum.
Yes.
The others are just soon to expire.
Okay.
For your information.
Well, those, yes.
And I'll make sure I'll post those on our website if they haven't, some of them have already been posted.
Okay.
Has anyone else applied for the Board of Health?
No. Not recently.
If it's all right with the commission, I would like to schedule an appointment with, to talk with Sam Chico. One of the main reasons is there's a, this is part of my report, so I'm going to go ahead and give it now. One of the reasons is there's a movement at the state level to regionalize all health departments. The concern by Dr. Gupta, the concern is that basically they're going to take a lot of money out of the counties. Seems like every time I turn around, every meeting I go to, there's someone with a great idea that's going to take more and more money from the county level and put it at, put it at a different level. I know that has been a, I, I know there's 15, 16 health departments that are in financial trouble, but there's 55 counties, which means there's 55 that are not in, or there's a balance of that 55 that are not in financial trouble. So, they're trying to come up with, as Charleston has a tendency of doing, come up with a grand solution for the 15 Board of Health and they don't really think about how it adversely affects the other, what, that'd be 40. They don't, they don't seem to pay attention. They like to consolidate power in Charleston, which I don't think is the solution to anything, including in tax reform. So, I think it would be good to take this opportunity to interview, because of the situation, to interview our Board of Health members that they come up and maybe even set, as I get further reports as to what's going on, maybe set up a joint meeting with the entire Board of Health to see what we could do to make sure that our Board of Health is protected.
I would move to approve this. Okay. Do you represent commission?
And I'll second. I think that's a great idea. And I also like both ideas, not only with Sam, but also I think we do need to meet with the board.
Yes.
To discuss this because this may be next year during the legislative session.
Very impactful.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Okay. So, we will have a meeting, set up with Sam Chico, and at a later date, meet with the board members.
In regular session or work session or outside?
Work session.
Yeah, we can do that right after. Yeah. Okay. I'd like to go back to recycling equipment. I know this keeps coming up on the agenda, but I had asked for, beyond, we did have bids and have you reviewed the bid?
Yeah, we've reviewed, they're pretty cut and dry. We have one bid from Northern Mountain State Metals and that was for all three vertical balers and that was $4,000 a unit and that was $12,000 total. And then from Enterprise Sanitation for the conveyor, we had one bid of $7,200. So, it's whether you want to accept the bids and sell or you just want to keep the equipment.
I'd like to show you, I was out there yesterday and I just want to show you pictures and they are starting to get rusted. And again, it's not major rust yet, but it is clearly problems that we're going to have if we just keep them for a period of time. So, I'll just say that and then I'll let Eldon speak.
Well, I have some questions. One is, how do these bids compare to the actual market value of these products? I mean, what, if we had to go out and buy, buy the stuff, how much would it cost?
Ah, you're, I mean, it's, you're getting minimal for it, I'm going to tell you. I mean, as of that, Jambi did that before and I think that, you know, they just give us estimates on what they could be used, but we did not have an auction. We, we took bids and.
Right.
The only thing we can do now is if you accept the bids or don't accept the bids.
Well, but I gotta do something more than that. I gotta know whether it's a decent bid or not. I don't know whether, I don't know how much this equipment costs. I need to know how much, what's going to cost to protect this equipment? We can't just let it sit out there. It's gonna, there's going to be costs associated with that. And if we don't sell it and store it, what, what are we storing it for? My dad was an auctioneer for years and years and years and he used to auction down at OJ White Storage and other auctions places where grandma put something in storage 40 years ago because she knew she was going to need it and now the kid, the parents wouldn't sell it because grandma would never give it up. So, they, for 40 years, they were paying storage and the grandkids had my dad and they auctioned it off. Well, that's my question. Is that what we're doing here if we try to keep it or, or, I just don't want to give it away if, if there would be another way of doing it as an auction. That's what I'm looking for advice.
And my position is still unchanged. I don't support the sale of the equipment at this time, particularly at the prices that you're going to garner so little from it, that there's still a hope of that, an additional transfer station or the possibility of Marion County being able to reestablish a different type of recycling program. I'd rather see it not go out of the county. I'd rather see it benefit our county.
Um, and Ed, reason why we brought it back up because you weren't here and Ed.
Well, obviously.
Ed and I disagree and, and I understand Ed's concern, but after being involved, firsthand knowledge of the recycling situation that's going on in Mine County, it appears that there isn't going to be anything changing in our recycling situation in the next year. Even listening to Mr. Jackson, you know, to possibly get a transfer station, he was clearly wanting the transfer station and maybe if added on recycling. So, it's a second thought. My concern is we have the possibility of earning $19,200 that we could put into the recycling fund. The equipment is really, it can only be used for certain specific items and right now, Marion County is still not able to handle it or use it. We have people who are interested in buying it. The cost, it is low. I think the $6,000 was what we were hoping for, for the $4,000 bid and the $7,200, we were hoping more than that. However, we're at a situation that if we just let it sit and rot, we're going to have nothing and then the taxpayers are going to say, like you said, we're holding on to something and we have the possibility of getting something out of it. It's kind of like, I think of it's like when we go to a yard sale, you know, you know you're not going to get the full price, but it's something that we could use and benefit the recycling program down the road by using it. And right now, that equipment will not be used easily within the next year, I believe. That's why I'm hoping to move forward on it and use that money for the recycling program.
Well, I just went through my philosophy, but I'm without enough information. I don't, I don't know how much, how much is this, how much is this, if we went out to replace this equipment, how much would, would we get? How much it would be worth? How, you gotta know that in order to figure out how low this is. We've got some figures there which I, I'm totally opposed to just letting something sit and rot. Something has to be, something has to be done with it. But in order for me to authorize the sale of the taxpayer's property to an entity, I need to, I need to know this information. Is this, is this value that they're giving us an adequate value with the discounts, like you said?
Right.
The percentage discounts, you could take into fact, weighed against the cost of keeping this property, because there's a cost with keeping property. People don't realize that. Well, I'll save on to this. Well, if you save on to something, it's a cost of something. I need, I need that, I need that balancing number to, to give a final approval. My, my, my inclination is unless we're going to use it in the next six months to a year, we sell it. But I cannot, I can't vote on something that I'm so blind on, on the value. You understand what I'm saying?
You want to know how much it's going to cost? How much is it worth new and how much is it worth used and you want to know how much it's going to cost to store it for six months to a year?
Yes, sir. That's what I need to know.
I'm going to have to get that from Jambi because he has all that. I'm, I'm just, I went and did.
Well, I understand. I understand. That's my position and I would move we table this until we get this information next week.
I will second that motion.
It's been properly moved, motion to table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Passes two to one. Thank you. So, we'll table it for the next, till we get the information. That's fine.
I'll have the information.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? Diane?
No.
Good. Okay. New business, dog warden agreements for the fiscal year 2015-16.
Okay. These are intergovernmental agreements that we get into with Star City, Granville, Morgantown, and Westover. The figures are based on the actual calls that have been made plus a 3% increase. This year, Granville, the number of calls, this fee is based on, Granville had 40, the contract cost would be $6,033.20. Morgantown had 237 calls for $35,746.71. Star City had 17 calls for $2,564.11. And Westover had 79 calls for $11,915.57.
Move to approve and authorize the president to sign.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes three to zero. Okay. Consideration of fee on sheriff services. This was brought up at a work session and if you want to explain.
This is something that Herschel Mullins brought to the commission's attention where we could charge an additional $25 on services of the sheriff. This would be by motion as we did with adding the $5 cost of the teen court fee to tickets. The, the account would be, any amounts collected by the sheriff pursuant to this section would be deposited in a separate account of the general county fund used by the sheriff for expenses of providing the services hearing described, provided that $2 of each fee collected pursuant to the provisions of this section shall be deposited by the county commission in the West Virginia Deputy Sheriff's Retirement Fund. Then at the end of the year, any surplus funds would be rolled back into the general county fund.
I would like to see the sheriff present for, I have a few questions that I'm not quite clear about how this is done.
For next week.
Would that be possible?
Sure. Then we'll just hold it.
Okay.
Okay. We'll just put it on next week.
Yep. I mean, my questions are, you know, are the fees an after fee? In other words, obviously somebody's innocent until proven guilty, so you can't, and what happens if the issue is pled out or dismissed? Is there still a fee? So, I'd like to have that clarified.
It's for serving any person with order, notice, summons, or other process where the body is not taken, except a subpoena, served on a witness, and making return the amount of $25. So, it's kind of like a process service.
Process service fee.
For some reason, I always thought we were sheriffing that, but Herschel says we're not, so.
I'll be sheriffing next week.
Okay. Okay. That's fine. That sounds good. Is, does anyone else have any other new business? Seeing none, reports from elected officials? Any elected officials?
Kelly.
Well.
Well. Standing in for.
I don't have any.
Okay. Great. Reports from county commission. Ed, you want to go first?
Yes. Last night, it was my pleasure to attend a meeting that we're going to have a new event at Camp Muffley and this is called Eat in the Hills. And I'm announcing it now. It's not until August the 22nd, but we're looking for entries for people who wish to be entered into this international chili cook-off. All right? It's going to benefit empty bowls. So, this is an initial, this is the initial time of the event on August 22nd and the thrilling thing is you can not only win money, but you can also win yourself a spot into the national cook-off. In other words, if there are 20 entries of white, there's white and red chilies, if there are 20 entries in each category, and I believe 10 gives you another spot, if there's only 10 or less, then you can win a right to a playoff spot. In other words, you go there, but you have to win your way into the nationals. So, this is an exciting event, I think, that is going to continue to grow. The commission is in support of this. We're letting the, the people who are doing this use the camp for free in its first year and then there will be a percentage of the gate charged if it continues and it's successful. I have nothing else.
Okay. Eldon?
I think maybe I gave most of my important already in the, in the body of things. I've been with the West Virginia Association of Counties and the County Commissioners Association. I serve on both those boards. It is, I find it interesting and in the fact that actually other county officials and include all elected officials at the county level and county commissioners are very supportive of what Montague County's doing and looking to us as a model and involves me and, as I mentioned earlier, in a lot of conversations what the counties are trying to do and want to do. They've, and they've also shared a number of things that they are doing that I think we could benefit from. I would, I'm a little, I've spent some time in Charleston, too, and I already made mention and I'm, I'm hopeful that, given the fact that Murray Energy is laying so many coal miners off and we're losing so many jobs, we need to be progressive. And one of the reasons why West Virginia is always behind is they spend more time fighting one another than they do fighting for one another. As a representative of this commission, I know the philosophy of the other two commissioners is the same as mine and as I attend these sessions with the Association of County, I carry your message that we're fighting for each and every county in this state to help them better themselves in any way possible. And they, and we do and we work closely together on issues. I don't see, with a, with a few exceptions, but our current leadership in Charleston, I'm hopeful will focus on the essential important role of government, which is part of the message I'm carrying on behalf of this commission. And that is to provide the setting, the environment, including necessary infrastructure and, and policies for people to succeed. That's what it's all about. I'm talking about tax reform and I've been looking at, and I, and I've been studying up on my old tax information, my old tax classes, pulled out my old tax books and from my law and masters in public administration time and even worked on some of my business calculus stuff to do analysis of how things work. And so far in the tax reform, all I've heard about is they want to do with, with the inventory tax, personal inventory tax, without any idea of how they're going to replace it. Well, that, that, there's two problems with that. Number one, revenue needs to be broad-based, and it must, it needs to be at low, as low as possible, and needs to be broad-based, so everyone's paying their fair share. But when you take tax reform being a basis to remove, that's not really tax reform. And I'm just hopeful that this, this whole tax reform discussion isn't about one thing, and that's to remove the inventory tax, which some of the leadership that's in business have always opposed the inventory tax. So I'm hoping that's not it. So I've continued to represent this commission, and, and I always welcome input and advice and further things, because when I go down, I try to carry, carry your message, and what, what you all think and your philosophy. So that's what, that's what I've been doing, and I'm, I'm feeling rather, rather positive that the counties, the counties as a whole has a great future if Charleston will get out of our way. So that's my, that's my opinion.
Well, thank you, and I do want to bring up, you did mention about the loss of jobs. On behalf of the county commission, I called delegate Caputo and offered any sort of services that we could do as a commission, and found out that they were working with the Workforce America, and one of the things he said, there was a possibility that they wanted to get the information out and to the western end, and I volunteered our building here, if they wanted to come here and use this room to get out the information and the like. So, so we've passed on, and I wanted to say we did, I did on all three behalf, because it appears there could be some more layoffs coming, from what we're hearing from Murray Energy.
Is Cecil Roberts in town?
Yes, he is today. He is speaking at the.
I, I know Cecil from when, way back when.
Right, well, you were with the late.
Right, I was with him all this time.
So this is a troubling time, and, but I did want them to know that we were, anything that we could do, the Mine County Commission wanted to help. Second thing, also, after we received the good news about the additional people that are going to come work on our roads from Maddox, I did meet with the city manager and just asked him, could he give us a list of roads that are state roads in the city? And I was going to get, take this set of roads, let's get from you all, you know, we'll get a, a list of roads, too, give it to Diane, and then we're going to send it over. I guess, I, I, right now, I'm trying to figure out who the contact person would be. I'd like to send it back to Maddox, but also to Barbara Fleischer in the House of Delegates.
We'll start with Jake's run.
Yeah, so we'll get a list of roads, too. But I did want the people to know in the city of Morgantown, that we still know that the city is in Montague County, and I know College Avenue and Route 7, Green Bag Road, which is outside the city, but we need to immediately work on that, so I, so we can get a list of this next week, and we'll compile it.
That, that's good.
Yeah, I, I thought that would help us out. We received a letter from Ron Justice, and I didn't realize till, it's, actually, the meeting is tomorrow. He's asking us to meet about the update of the Community Aquatic Center, and I didn't know if we wanted to discuss. We have a 10 to 11, 11 noon, and noon to 1 meeting, only because we couldn't all meet together.
I, I had already responded.
Oh, which one did you?
I am, I am the 11 to noon.
Okay. Are you able to meet either 10 to 11 or noon to 1?
Well, yeah, I just texted him before this meeting that noon was okay.
Okay, so I will take the 10 to 11. Okay, good, I wanted to make sure of that. And finally, the other great news, and I want to end on great news. If you remember our first, the first day when I was nominated as president, we went over to the sheriff's building, and we were able to give away three bikes. Well, yesterday, on behalf of the county commission, I was able to attend where there was now 13 more bikes given to individuals. Now they're up to 100 bikes in West Virginia that have been given. And I want to say, there's another 100 that they have that they're willing to give. And these are bike for mobility-disabled students or kids, and really, there's no cost at all to these individuals or families, and they're $1,800. So they can call Mine County Commission, we have information, or we could go, we want to thank Variety. But I wanted to say that this continues, and what we did on that first day is, if you would have seen the smiles, as I said, this is awesome. They were, they kept talking about the bikes, and the kids kept running up, and they kept saying, no, not yet, they were so excited. So I, I just want to thank Variety and thank the partners who were involved with this. Any other reports? Oh, yes, sure.
I missed a public comment.
Sandy, we. We don't mind, well, if, if it's all right, we won't.
Absolutely, sure.
We will.
About a month ago, I had a lady in my office who was recovering from a stroke, came in to talk about some unclaimed property, but also had some taxes she was, she was trying to help her son with. I brought her over to the tax office, and she became, I would say, very anxiety-ridden, because she was just non-understanding and very nervous. And I just think that we don't do enough of this when it should be. I want to compliment Chief Tax Deputy Palmer, who is here today, and her staff, and especially Janet in her office, for the way they handled this lady, because she was very confused, she had just had a stroke not too months, too many months before this. And they helped her, they got her a glass of water, they called her son also on the phone, because, you know, she was having a little bit of difficulty. But the way they handled it, I think that a lot of times we don't compliment our elected officials or our public servants the way we should. And from me, from my point as a worker for Treasure Purdue, I just wanted to thank them for the way they handled that situation when I brought her over there. So I just want to say kudos to them and to the tax, to the chief, to the tax office.
Well, thank, thank you for the positive information. Everyone likes to be rewarded with a positive statement every once in a while, and we do appreciate that. Seeing no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, adjourn.
Second.
It's improperly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.